We are live.
Thank you. Welcome to the CAPC meeting for the Eureka Springs Advertising and Promotion Commission. It's October 29, 2005, 5:00 p.m. here at the Eureka Springs Auditorium. People call the basement and we'll go start off with taking a roll.
Colton Scrivner.
Here.
David Abenzino.
Here.
Heather Wilson is here. Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Shira Faust.
Here.
Rob Schmidt.
Here.
We have a quorum for business. Heather, Shira, writing everybody's name down so I document it. Ty is here and Mike is here. Daniel's not here?
She's here. She's bigger than us.
She'll be here, okay. Agenda updates. Anybody want to add anything to the agenda as they're presented to us?
I'd like to add on the new business, coordination of events.
Coordination of events.
Of events.
Anybody else want to change or take away anything from the agenda?
If it's not covered on the agenda in the Tourism Director's Report, I was hoping for an update on New Year's Eve. Will that be its part of it? Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. We have Colton via Zoom, so. All right, do I hear approval of minutes? I mean, excuse me, approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Chair made the motion and Robert seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 We have agenda. Approval of minutes for September 24th, have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for September 24th.
Seconded.
David made the motion and Shira seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Minutes have been approved. There is a copy in our work, here in our folder, three ring folder, and we also got a copy via email ahead of time. Public comments, I'm pretty safe to say we don't have any, so there's no public here. So always glad to give opportunity for anybody to speak. Financial report, Mr. Ty.
All right, first page shows assets. They have cash of $1,583,000 at the end of September, which equals our assets also. Liabilities match. If anyone has any questions, go onto the P and L. Income for September was $195,000 with a budget of $192,000. Year to date, as of end of September, $1,480,000 with a budget of $1,502,000. And you had a chance to look at these, I assume, so just let me know if you have any questions on expenses.
Any surprises?
No, just, no.
I saw that we were actually up in August.
Yeah. The net income for September was negative $50,000 with a budget of negative 75. Year to date, budget negative 425 with a budget of 384, so we're about 40 shy of the budget right now. And then the last page shows the actual collections. The, as of last year, at this time, we're about $20,000 short for actual collections.
But we're about 38,000 over 23.
Right.
So, not too bad.
Yeah, yeah.
October seemed to be good. We'll see how that goes. September seems a little soft right now, so we'll just have to see how it goes.
It seemed like town was really busy, though. You can get to drive through and eyeball in it.
October's been pretty busy, so we'll see how it goes. The next piece of paper, the report, is the past due collectors. And the market funding report. I'm sorry? And the market funding report. This thing shows the balance on market funds. Anyone has any questions?
I see one on the multiple months past due which closed shop.
Right, but they have past due taxes.
You're on, you have a plan on all of those, right?
Yeah.
Just making sure because if they close the shop, you know, like you're...
Right, but they still have some taxes they need to pay.
Good.
So any other questions?
Anybody? We have a motion to accept the financial report. Let's present it.
So moved.
Seconded.
Heather made the motion and David seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Finance report, financial report is accepted. Tourism Director's Report, Mike.
Before we go into that, we've got a little bit of a rentals overview and SDRs here. Go ahead and have Ty go ahead and do that, please.
All right, the next report is from Airbnb, AirDNA, sorry, over the Airbnb and Verbo listings. The first chart shows historical revenue for the Eureka area versus Eureka city limits for September by year. So we're pretty even. The next chart shows annual revenue trends compared to other cities, and I changed this one this time. Last, the last few times I've shown the full year for the previous years, and I changed that this time, so each of those previous years is just through September also, so it's a true comparison year to year. It looks pretty much the same, like it's the same chart, but that is through September for each year. The next page, the next chart shows the available listing nights and the average nights booked per month for each year. The next chart shows the pacing. As of end of September, October was better than this time last year. November and December also better. January's a little down, but then it's not much to go on. There's not a lot of bookings for January, February, March. The next chart shows the listing nights booked by month, by year. That top line, the blue line, is 2025, so it's up than previous years. And the last chart is a new chart that I came up with, and I tried to do a weekend analysis of revenue by different event weekends, and so it's, even though that event is that weekend, there's obviously people in town for other things also, but it's just the weekend. And this is also just short-term revenue for that weekend. It's not restaurants or other lodging, so that's kind of a comparison, a way to compare and see what happened on those weekends, which is the short-term revenue.
What is short-term revenue?
Airbnb and Verbo.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah. But it's just kind of, can get an idea of what happens on those weekends.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is the AirDNA data, so this is all going to have to do with VRBO and Airbnb, not our standard short-term rental businesses.
Right, so I mean, with, by having AirDNA, we were able to get, you know, the zombie nightmare information from last weekend.
Sure.
You know, so that was pretty handy. The zombie nightmare weekend, just in the short-term rental revenue brought in over $300,000 just for that weekend, so.
But it will not include things like the area businesses that don't participate in VRBO.
Right, it does include the other lodging, and it doesn't include restaurants or anything, so.
Okay. Got a question here. What, so we've noticed, or we can notice that Branson has a significant increase in that section.
In that sector, yeah.
What would be very interesting to see is like if you would run a report on the available listing nights for Branson. You know, the reason why I'm asking is like, it would be, I would be curious to see if there's a shifting going into VRBOs and AirBMs over there away from hotels. Kind of like to understand, like, oh, they had a massive increase in more AirBMs and the hotels are down. So is that, is that something you could figure out?
I can, I can see the listings for Branson. I can't see the hotels to compare, though.
Right, but if you would run the available listing nights for Branson and see if they had a massive increase.
Yes, I can do that.
And, you know, that would give us the idea that, okay, because we're only watching that market, if there was a shift from the hotels going into AirBMs.
I can, I can provide a chart showing Branson's listings.
That would be interesting to see the difference. I mean, they are over our percentage, I guess, in the increase. I mean, we're kind of flat in that area, but because Eureka Springs, what I'm hearing is like, you know, Airbnb and VRBO is 10, it's going down a little bit. I mean, there's places they, they stopped using the, or stopped being an Airbnb. Shira?
I just was going to say, I have a kind of a hard time knowing what to do with this data for a couple of reasons. One is we are not Branson. We don't have the same things, the same scale. They may have more AirBMs and VRBOs than we do. I mean, it just, it's very hard to use this for me for accurate comparison to what's going on in any way, so I know that's probably not helpful information. But just so you know, the things that, when I, when we were proposed, AirDNA as something to look into and was it valuable to us, the things that I thought would be most valuable would be able to, would be being able to pick out, are we getting tax collections from these folks that are signed up through these things that can be independent agents that are not maybe business owners in the town of Eureka Springs and things like that? And that, to me, seems very valuable. But other than that, some of this data seems kind of abstract and difficult to extrapolate.
And I am working, I'm working through that right now. I do have, that AirDNA did provide the data of the lodging, SDR lodgings that they're pulling data from. And so I have that and I'm working through that to make sure everyone's filing.
I believe that. You're awesome when you work hard. I just was letting you know that when I look at these charts, I feel kind of like, ooh, pretty colors.
And if there's any other kind of, this was just kind of what's available in AirDNA, and so if there's anything other, you know, else that you would like to see, I'm happy to get that also.
Cool.
I think the numbers will show us trends, and even the state, well, at least can we look at it going, well, if we're down in what weekend, are they down everywhere, you know? That will help us kind of go, are we doing something wrong?
To add to what you're saying there, and excuse me if I interrupted, but it seems like it would be interesting to know, like, this in comparison to our businesses that aren't predominantly, like, is there a way to compare and contrast the other businesses that aren't Airbnb and VRBO with the data of the Airbnb VRBO? Is that a possibility?
It's a possibility. I will work on it.
Because you have all this extra time.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Are we done?
Thank you.
Suffice to say, we have an amazing amount of data that we can roll through. I'm going to numb you a little bit more here. We do have some September event reporting, which basically gives us a little bit of insight into a few things. This basically came from Azera from Madden, and it's notable just to kind of take a look at where people are coming from in reference to these particular events and so forth. And we looked at the Folk Festival, which ran first week of September. You know, our big markets are the ones you would predict. Springfield, obviously, is very close to us. Fort Smith Fayetteville, Little Rock Pine Bluff, Tulsa, Oklahoma City, Kansas City, Joplin, Pittsburgh, and St. Louis. Then we look at the website traffic, kind of with the same set of eyes to see who is seeing us and who is paying attention to these things. And we see, you know, kind of a similar formula with Kansas City being at the top of the page, and you have to take a look, this is not, the real numbers, these are sample sizes. So the sample size could be, you know, 5% of the total population, so we don't know. And I don't exactly know what that, you know, percentage of error minus or plus tends to be. But what we do see are some things that are useful. You know, the average percentage of people that traveled is 100-plus miles. That's 37% of the volume that come into town, at least for the Folk Festival, at any rate. So that was a quick look at just the Folk Festival as a whole. We'll jump over here to the concert, which was part of the Folk Festival, the Ozark Mountain Daredevils. And the sample size was, you know, really very little, it's so tiny. Again, we don't get a lot of great data out of this, but, you know, 75% of the people traveled over 100 miles. They came from Tulsa, one came from New Orleans, St. Louis, and Springfield. But then we look at the website traffic again comparatively, and we see similar things. Eureka, Kansas City, Tulsa, Maryland Heights, Boonville, Dallas, and then all the way down to St. Louis. Jeep Jam, 57%, well, 57 was the sample size of, I don't know how many people showed for that one. The website traffic, again, very similar to what we see. KC was very high in the web traffic, but again, our actual origin markets, Springfield was, was up there probably with the biggest number. Fort Smith Fayetteville Springdale, that DMA. KC Mo, Oklahoma City, Dallas, all the way down to Omaha, with a couple of people showing up from there. And again, we reached all the way over to Denver for some of that website traffic. We had another Jeep Jam. This one was the one that emanated from the Passion Play. Bigger sample size of 244 people sampled. Springfield, Fort Smith, Tulsa, Dallas, and so forth. So again, no big surprises here, but we are tracking these things just to get kind of an idea of what, you know, these events will do. And the further this along, as we look at market support funding, we can go back and take a look at those trends from a year ago to see, well, this is what happened, you know, when you had your event. Couple more, the Enduro Tire Festival. That was an interesting sample size of 1,105 people. You know, these are the people that were basically here on two wheels riding around, and it was a pretty big event, and we did pretty well with this one. I think the last one here is Corvette Weekend. 132 was the sample size. 42% of the people traveled over 100 miles to get here. And again, we see this same pattern, Springfield, Fort Smith, Little Rock, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Kansas City, Dallas, and Joplin. No big surprises really came out of any of these particular weekend analytics, but again, at the same time, it gives us something to kind of fall back and take a look at.
Hey, Mike, quick question.
Yes, sir.
If you could go back one more.
Yes.
When you talk about sample size. Is this just a random number that's thrown out there, or?
Yeah.
I guess I'm curious just to know, like, why is one 1,100 and the other one is 132, and it's not like a percentage? Like, we're going to, we're going to poll 40% of people who are here for this event instead of this random number, which I don't understand where it's coming from?
It's kind of how the, you know, I'm not going to try to get into the thesis here, but, but when they take a look at these sample sizes, again, it's based upon location tracking, you know, what is turned on with your, with your phone. And I think what they're trying to do is demographically match up, for instance, what's the typical Corvette owner? Who is he? Well, he's going to be a little older, she's going to be a little older, and probably that particular size is just indicative of what the overall market will see in terms of Corvette ownership. Versus go back to the Fat Tire Festival, a lot more people have bicycles, and I think that sample size was indicative of that demographic being much younger, all the way up to a little bit older, too.
So like this Enduro people, 1,000s, because they're younger and they're not afraid to get hurt.
Exactly. We'll go back and take a look at this again. You're seeing, basically, you know, 1,105 people out of this sample size. The sample size could have been as many as 10,000. It just depends on really where they were hit. This one is, I think the Fat Tire Festival was interesting only from the standpoint that we, we would theorize that these people, because of this particular festival, this was, this was one of the, what, the third, second or the third leg of this entire big festival they were doing. So these people were traveling, you know, from one to event to another one, so this was not a one-off. So that's why I think the sample size was elevated quite a bit.
Thank you.
Probably doesn't completely answer the question, but, you know, again...
It helps me understand it a bit.
Trend analysis.
They just seem like really random numbers, so.
Analytically, and this is from Voyage, which is not part of our AirDNA in as much as we use this through Madden to, you know, kind of take a look again at where our traffic is coming from. And with our website analytically, you know, we had 38,000 sessions, basically, that were plugged into us during the month of September. Our website traffic actually has gone down a little bit. We predict two things. Number one, we've talked about this a little bit, artificial intelligence is taking over some of that. People can go ahead and speak into the microphone and say, tell me all you can about Eureka Springs, and then it spits out this information, and they're done. Average session is down a little bit, too, from, you know, 2 minutes and 47 seconds, and our engagement rate is also down a little bit. But what's happening is this is very typical of the seasonality, I think, of things that we see going forward. So it's not bad news at all. It just is a matter of, we have engaged sessions that are doing pretty well, but we're still being able to go ahead and capture a pretty good amount of traffic. If they came to us and only were here for 60 seconds, then we would worry. But when you're up 2 minutes or 3 minutes, then you are engaging people, and they're getting the information that they're looking for. So this is good. The other two things we measure here is the paid traffic. What do we pay for? And our MATA and our other MATA types of paying for these things? And what are they looking for? Well, they're looking for events. That's number one with a bullet. They're looking for the events list, things to do, plan your trip. And again, trolleys came back up again. We continually see trolleys stick to us. Things to do, events, and events. So what this basically suggests is, and this is what we talked about with our SEO Bootcamp, is what you do as a business owner and you're running your own website and so forth, very specific are those key words that will draw people in. So you can't say how beautiful the bathrooms are, how luscious the drapes are, and how wonderful the food is. People want to know what's going on. So you really have to be very concise in terms of giving that information out. Where are they coming from? Well, it's interesting. Not said is what we don't know, which is just location tracking again, but Chicago, Houston, Kansas City, Dallas, Oklahoma City, Fort Worth, and Little Rock. Those are our markets, and those are strong. That's, that, I think that's good news as well. So when we jump over to this page, our organic search traffic, we see a similar set of details. Things to do, things to do, well, where to stay, and things to do and attractions. Kansas City, Oklahoma City, Dallas, Chicago, Tulsa, and Little Rock. Again, traffic from the key markets in Dallas and Chicago saw significant declines, while regional traffic from Tulsa and Oklahoma City jumped fairly well. So a little closer to home, a little bit more ability to get here. You know, whether or not they're flying in from XNA, from, for instance, O'Hare, whatever, but what we do know is that that four-hour drive window is still very valuable to us. We have done something pretty exciting. Let me take a sip of water here. Through the state of Arkansas, we've purchased in the past a program called CrowdRiff. CrowdRiff is what they call a UGC, user-generated content, where people take pictures and upload them, and then we get the rights to be able to go ahead and use those. We pay for that privilege. And in the recent couple of weeks or so, Caitlin, who is in charge of doing all of this work, became very concerned about our relationship with CrowdRiff. So, okay, good opportunity to knock on a door and see who else is doing stuff out there along these lines. And what it amounted to was there were certain things that we found that other providers could give us that were really good. So in doing some very firm negotiations with CrowdRiff and also through CJRW, we were not only able to cut the cost of our program, but we enhanced the value of what we got by about 100%. So this is exactly what we're able to do right now. It's a simple, so, little simple thing, but follow along, if you will. When you go to visit euricasprings.com, and you can just take a look at how this thing rolls, go to plan your trip, and let's just take a look at Christmas, free to be jolly. Now, you can have fun with this on your own. As you scroll through, you'll see, you know, the events, the things that are coming up and whatnot. Excuse me, but as we get toward the bottom of the page, we discovered something that was really fascinating to us, and it's called that little dot that says eight. Well, when we click on that dot now, we can pull up all of these points of interest within Eureka Springs, and we can attach about anything we want to to them. Well, now, we can come back in here with this map, and we can take a look at, well, in this case, let's find Christmas lights and activities that kind of go along with that. So you can see where a lot of these locations are, so we click on here, Main Street Eureka Springs. That little dot now brings us up full picture. It gives us video, if we want it. We can walk through this little area right here. This is a stunning and significant improvement and revelation to the use of a website and location tracking. So now, it seems so arbitrary, you ought to be able to do this. Well, it's trickier than you think. But the point being is, we're now able to go ahead and plug in all of these little variables to really drill down into any particular property, regardless of what it is. It can be an event, an activity, it can be, you know, we'll get into it, beautiful lodging facilities, beautiful restaurants and so forth. So it's a really, really cool feature, and I think that Caitlin did a great job in putting this together. A very intricate process, but it's a big jump in terms of just the usability of the website. And we have admittedly, I think, one of the, one of the coolest websites right now are similar CVBs and AMP commissions around the state of Arkansas. This is really a very, very well-done site, so I'm really proud of what Caitlin has done with it. Lot of activities, and I'll go ahead and jump to the top here. You mentioned Eureka Springs and New Year's Eve. Heather, we are going to be meeting next week, second session of what is going on. Monday, I found out that we were granted $19,000 from the state of Arkansas to go ahead and buy television and some other activities that we had requested, and they were very enthusiastically supportive of our program and our proposal, and we'll be getting that check fairly soon. We are working right now on about 50 different moving parts, one of which is the actual live broadcast that we are going to go ahead and maintain internally through the CAPC and our work. We'll probably be using as many as two or three cameras live down on New Year's Eve. We have applied for the Entertainment District permit. You'll notice it did come off the agenda for Monday night city council meeting. There was a couple of things in there that we did not like, the way it was kind of put together, so we brought it back in-house, we're retooling that. Basically, what we're trying to do right now is expand the district a little bit to take it up to Benton Street, all the way up to Fendergrass Corner, and going down Main, and then up and around. The number of actual physical establishments is, actually, hasn't grown that substantially, but yet it does include things like Mud Street Cafe, that kind of wanted to be involved in that, as well as anybody that is going to be having basically a warming station and also probably selling alcohol. We have two bands will be performing. We've also made the deposit on our laser show again, once again, which is really kind of exciting. That was such a great feature and power attraction last year. We have got a partnership right now with iHeart Media, and they are going to be providing a one-to-one match on the money that we spend with them, so we're putting in $5,000. They're giving us $5,000. They'll be doing live, remote, that night during the show, but for the entire month of December, we're using some of that same money to promote all of our Christmas activities in Eureka Springs. And then we're backing up a little bit into the month of November, because on Black Friday, we're going to have the Wizards of Winter here performing in the auditorium, and we'll be putting some really power TV on with that program. Tickets are on sale for right now. Tickets for anything are like day before, so, you know, we're balancing, you know, our activities pretty carefully. activities pretty carefully. But we feel pretty positive about the way that it's coming together. So most of the tough, heavy lifting is going to be based upon what we do at the CAPC and our staff, and the work with Ron and his company. And there's some, there's some question marks right now about some things that have been discussed, but really they're too preliminary to go out too far. But we will be doing things very similar to what we did last year. So.
Are we still having the water drop?
Yes, there will be a drop. There will be a drop.
And then I.
We don't know if it's going to be a, a physical drop or a countdown drop. Something's got to fall.
Have real water.
I, and this is just a curious question. Who is selling the alcohol? Is the bars are selling it? And then you're allowed to go out into the district with alcohol, but you have to go into the bars? And then we're involving the bar owners?
Yeah, we do not sell it. Well, actually, because of the entertainment district and depending on what happens here, we could. Now, we're using this as sort of like the bad weather place, if in fact that happens. We have not booked anything in here on purpose to be able to have the space if we need to do that and we need to pivot to come indoors. But that's the only reason we would be, we would be selling anything. So.
We've already had the bar owners.
Yeah, we've had one meeting, but we need to have another two or so.
So the, the entertainment district that you're proposing, to me, as long as I've been here, is the largest one I've ever heard of, correct? For the city?
Sounds like it. I have to see the map, yeah.
Yeah. Well, just going off what his, what his boundaries, what he stated the boundaries were.
It only goes further that what we had last year was basically the same thing as this year, except we're going up to Benton Street.
Yeah. I guess my question is, from a city council point of view, is that when it comes to, in front of us to approve or deny, how much of a strain is this going to put on our emergency management services? It's already a, historically a night where people like to drink a lot. And, you know, I don't think there were any issues last year. I'm not aware of any. But I'm just curious if they've given you any feedback.
Billy and I are having a meeting about that specifically. There was not as much a concern, David, about the safety, because they were very honed in last year to the event. And similarly, because of Zombie Crawl this past weekend, they've really raised, I think, the security blanket, if you will, tremendously. One of the, one of the things that that came up was the marking of where the entertainment districts begin and where they end. And if you'll recall, Public Works has put together some pretty big signs that indicate where those, those districts are. The other thing that came up was just the abundance of trash. Who's responsible for that? And it will fall back upon the property owners to pick up their trash, as opposed to trying to push those services off onto the city. So those were two things that came up in our department head meeting yesterday, as a matter of fact. But Billy and I are going to go ahead and have another session about just specifically where they start and where they end. And that way, everybody knows. There should be no question about that.
That's part of the application process for the police department.
And I guess one of the other things that I'm.
And fire, I think, as well.
I'm sorry.
Yes, fire department also has to prove it.
Everybody.
Yeah, they usually all have to sign off on it before it even comes to us. And another question along what Heather was asking was about alcohol sales. So are shops selling alcohol?
No.
Only restaurant?
No, no.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
You've got to have the ABC permit.
Yes, that's what I wanted to.
And that is, not to be litigious, but that is their liability. They're aware of that, and they're volunteering.
And their license.
And the meetings that take place with the bar owners, everything's good. Okay.
Well, there will be, you know, obviously.
Hope that's going well.
We accept the fact that people will be drinking.
Sure, sure.
We also have to accept the fact that if you walk into a bar that has an ABC permit, then there's a big obligation on the part of that, that license holder. For instance, you can't over serve, shouldn't be over serving. The one thing, and I, I look at it from the entertainment district, not from a standpoint of the economic reality, but really from almost the security reality, is people don't have to sneak around. They will be, you know, carrying a red cup, maybe, depending on what they're doing. The surprising thing that happened last year was that we were down there after the ending of the event, and we were picking up trash. It wasn't what you would suspect. In fact, it was actually kind of, where is the trash? They did a pretty good job, and, and we did not see, I think, an abuse any more so than we would see, you know, on a summer night. I don't know. We are really pushing this as a family opportunity versus just, you know, couples come on down and drink till you can't see. And that's also part of our relationship with the state of Arkansas, is that everything we're doing right now is also in promotion with the state. So that we saw something that was kind of cool because of the calendar. New Year's Eve is on a Wednesday. Well, that's Wednesday night, so make it a long weekend. Take off Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So you actually have like a five-day weekend. So we're kind of promoting that through the state of Arkansas. When you come across the line, come to Eureka Springs, with hat on over to Jonesboro, or go on down to Little Rock, or go to Fort Smith, or be a part of the scene in Arkansas. And that was a big selling point, because they appreciated the fact that we are taking $19,000 of state money, and we are putting that back into those messages. But we want people to see the state of Arkansas, too.
Share the wealth.
And that will also speak to another comment I have in regard to our relationship now with the state, which is really, really, really nice right now.
Are we also going to have like some vendors, like food trucks? No. Would it, would it make, I mean, I wasn't here last year. Would it make sense to encourage them to come down and say, hey, set up your food truck around the courthouse and sell your hot dogs or whatever?
I would highly advise against that after the earful that I just got last night. I have had so many restaurant owners extremely irate about food trucks coming into town. So I think that I would advise against that. And let our restaurants be full.
The food trucks are sitting in a certain place. I don't think they can move around town.
We would have a hard time with that. Logistically, just the placement of them, number one. Number two, the operational mechanics of electricity and, and all those things that go into. The other part of that, too, is just the issuance of a Department of Health license for whatever they're doing. And if they're not a vendor anyway, there had been a little bit of mild talk about having perhaps some vendors at the park. But I think based upon the amount of people, we, we hopefully predict it would actually sort of preclude doing something like that. The formula last year worked pretty well. It really did. Opening up the door a little bit to, for instance, Mud Street, who suggested that they wouldn't mind selling a Bloody Mary, would be okay. And I think when we take a look at just what is already there, having, you know, food on the ground is just, it's, that's a challenge. It really is. We're not really right, quite ready for that big step. So, anything else about New Year's Eve? But it's a work in progress, and I think it's coming along pretty well. We have, we've got some good things happening.
Have we discussed, sorry, have we discussed the infrastructure yet for wristbands and signage at bars and stuff? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. This past month has been a busy month for a whole lot of reasons in tourism. You know, we are members of the Northwest Arkansas Tourism Association, which most of you are aware. A couple of weeks ago, the state did something kind of really neat. They said, we'd like to have a round table. So this involved all of the native membership, along with Arkansas Parks Heritage and Tourism, all coming to Fayetteville, where we went to Theater Square. We spent two hours with the state, and we had a phenomenally great meeting. The state of Arkansas recognizes where the good stuff is. And they see the four-county area of Northwest Arkansas as being, you know, really the gold, if you will. And they've got a lot of interest in what we do up here. You know, number one, it's home of the Razorbacks, University of Arkansas. It has growing dynamics of all the, the business world attached to it. It has the phenomenal growth of 33 and a half people moving into Benton and Washington County every day of the week. But it also has the effect of spilling over into both Carroll and Madison Counties as well. And they came open, just basically say, what can we do? How can we, how can we further what you were going to do? So the governor has mandated, in as much as you can do this, is to say, in the next seven years, we want to double the tourism numbers in the state of Arkansas. The only way we get there is by promoting and promoting and promoting, and making sure that people know that they have a reason to come. Right now, the state has got, I'm trying to remember the number here. It's either seven or nine tourism areas. Native being one of them, Northwest Arkansas Tourism Association, which, again, Madison, Carroll, Benton, Washington County. And the state is looking at consolidating these regions into six, which means that Northwest Arkansas would go all the way over to darn near the doorstep of Jonesboro. It would be called the Ozark Mountain Region. This is a huge region. This is a lot of money to do this, but it suggests that the state and the Arkansas legislature is interested in pushing this product up higher. So right now, the state puts $2.1 million into these regions that we have. Native gets $197,000 a year, which we get to use to promote our area. That figure obviously would probably go up somewhat, maybe substantially. So we had a second meeting a couple of weeks ago, this time at Petty Gene State Park. I went along with my counterpart experienced Fayetteville, and then the other regions were there. And we heard more information about this kind of, if you will, redistricting of the zones of tourism in the state of Arkansas, and how that is going to affect our economy. And, you know, what I can tell you right now is this particular legislature doesn't have a lot to do right now, but they're going to get really busy very quickly because of this massive tourism component. Politically, everybody is really sitting on the tip of a needle right now, waiting for something to happen one way or the other. And we don't, we really know. But we look at these trends the way we have been looking at them, and we see it being fairly positive, that people still want to travel, they want to have new experiences. You know, the old saying that there's a sucker born every minute. Well, there's a tourist born every minute, if you will. And they're looking for those things to do. So, you know, we think that we're in a good spot in Northwest Arkansas. And Eureka Springs is particularly well looked at by the state of Arkansas. I mean, it's, it's really kind of proud to go to these meetings, and they're going, you guys really have it together in a lot of respects. So it's a pretty good feel-good moment for a lot of us. But that's just a little bit of what's going on. Right now, Jana is in Cincinnati promoting what we're doing here. She came back from Las Vegas, along with a state-sponsored trip that we were able to take advantage of. And when you go to Las Vegas and sell Eureka Springs, people are starting to say, oh, yeah, we, we are aware of you. We know more about Arkansas than we knew, you know, a few years ago. So that's a very positive thing, too. Just a couple other real quick things that I'm going to let Danielle tell you about a program that we're working on, too, with our local schools. Had a really interesting moment a couple of weeks ago with the Arkansas Department of Highways and their GIS Summit, which they brought all the people that are involved in government survey stuff together at the end of the Ozarks. And, and the mayor was able to speak to them for a few minutes, and I was able to speak to them for a little while. That's a hard, hard audience. They live at a different level. But it was okay. And we got through it. And I think they learned a little bit, and they were appreciative of the fact that, you know, that, number one, there was a cool place, that half of the people there had never been to Eureka Springs before. So it's always interesting to, you know, hear that, have you ever been here before? No. Okay, well, get ready, because we've only got zero stoplights for you all to take a look at. Similarly, Danielle's been doing a, a great job with what is Heart of Eureka, and also the Christmas opportunity that's coming forth, which are coming out rapidly right now. So a lot of Christmas is being pushed into our chairs and seats and tables and so forth, along with the rest of the city. And these are, these are good things. We have talked a little bit in the past, and you've challenged us before about, do you have enough hired help within the coffers? And the, you know, the answer is, conservatively, yeah, we're okay. But on the same token, we have talked about internship programs. And Danielle, I want you to kind of articulate your work with Dr. Pruitt, which is really, really good.
So teenagers, I love working with teenagers. So does Caitlin, and so does Jana. And so that is a demographic that is near and dear to our hearts. And knowing we have a great pool of FBLA and Rotary Interact, those clubs at our current, at our Eureka Springs High School, that are looking for opportunities to be trained, to be mentored, to learn a little bit more about the business professional field. And so we are, we met with the principal, the counselor, and superintendent, and proposed to them, we have activities coming up here in the holiday time, where we could really use some volunteers to be greeters and the hospitality, the face of Eureka Springs at certain activities. Our staff can't do it all. And so we would really love if we could help the teenagers out who are mandated to have a set amount of community service hours in order to graduate now. This would be an opportunity for them to do so locally, easy, memorable. And that's what we are putting forth. Interning, we would be more specific to put forth to the teenagers that are interested in learning the hospitality field, the business side. What does it take in the tourist industry? This is the industry that is the industry of Eureka Springs. So if we can feed and train and inspire, hopefully, they will learn a little bit more about what makes their town tick, how, what are some of the goings-on, the behind-the-scenes. That's what we want to be able to feed into. We are taking, we've been given the opportunity to come to the Eureka Springs High School during their advisory time, November 4th. I'll say it's the 11:30 to 12:30 time slot. And two different groups during those advisory times, the freshmen to seniors, and propose to them as admin, I would love help in learning, here's some said tasks. In the group's cells, in the socials, here's the task that we could use. If you're interested in interning, let's talk. If you're interested in community service hours, here's what we have coming up and how we could utilize and give you this opportunity. We will help you figure out rides, figure out commutes, because that's a challenge for our area teens. And we don't want that to hinder if they want to get involved. So that is something we're working, even the chamber. We're excited, because the chamber is looking for also help and community service hours and junior chamber members. And so they are going to come, and we are going to present unifiably. Here are two different city entities that you can serve at, pouring into the younger.
Any questions? How much is it going to cost?
Free.
It's free.
I love that price.
We actually do have, and we've not spoken with her yet, but a senior at Arkansas Tech University, who is, I believe, majoring in marketing, is from this area and is going to be hopefully doing some internship work with us, like one day a week or half a day or something, as part of her degree program, where she has to go out in the field. And she specifically requested she'd like to work with the CVB, Convention Visitors Bureau, that type of thing. So, you know, we think this is a good avenue. You know, we've really not reached out. So, you know, we think this is a good avenue, you know, we've really not reached out like this before, but it's a, it's a great way to go ahead and get people involved in this business that we call tourism, and again, the price is right, so.
Yeah, you know, there's the whole tourism, hospitality, career track now. I know some of the hotels in town have kind of tapped into that on internships and stuff. And what a great way to keep our young people in town, is to say, well, we can start training you early to have a career here, you don't have to go somewhere else, so.
Correct.
I only have one other thing, and I'm going to wait till the very end.
Do what?
I only have one other thing for my report, but I'm going to wait until we kind of go through the rest of your agenda.
Is there anything else?
All right, that's all then for old business budget. So I saw the workshop last week, y'all, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, y'all had tackled it again, some issues and stuff. Where are we at in the process?
We haven't really updated it again. I was hoping to get some feedback, if anyone had any thoughts on it, but we're still in the process of working on it, but.
Okay. Our next workshop is November 12th, we want to bring it back up then and talk about it some more. Is that okay for everybody?
I'll pass on to you that we are having a, a pre-meaden meeting on the 3rd of December, where they're going to bring basically a bit for their, a count of people, to kind of go over the budget as they proposed, or we've talked to them about 2026. Similarly, they are also here that next day, on the 4th, to do what we call our winter shoot, anyway. So it's going to be boots on the ground, but we have been talking back and forth, and I think the, the program that they are working on, I think, will be, will be good for all concerned, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any ideas for the budget, or for the workshop, the 12th? Let me know. We'll, we'll definitely put the budget on there. Okay, anything else about the budget? Any other questions? Moving on, vacant commission seats. I understand Mike and the staff have opened this back up for people to apply, and we, I put the word out as much as I could, we have not gotten any more new applicants. We still have two, people are still interested, Bradley Tate Green, and, I'm sorry, the other guy.
Brian Knapp.
Brian Knapp. And Bradley Tate, let me write this down real quick so I don't forget. So this process, how it happens is, if we have a viable candidate, what they need is a nomination, a second, and four votes. That's all. But I feel, I don't feel like it's fair to these folks to see, just leave them hanging as we look for more people, that kind of sends a negative message to me. So I think we should be upfront with them and saying, are these viable candidates, is anybody interested in nominating either one of these folks for the commission? And then as we get a second and four votes, and they can be put on, so. Any takers?
Well, we have a 50/50 option. Right this point, I mean, the, one way is like, we can, I agree with you, maybe we should, you know, give it a chance and fill the seat, or the other thing is like, yeah, we'll just hang on and wait, but then there's always a risk that, that we might have a second open seat, you know, like, and then all of a sudden, we're, you know. Who knows? Yeah. I mean, I'm not resigning, just saying, but.
I was on this commission, we had four commissioners, and that's all we could get, and it was, it was rough, make meetings, to make quorum and stuff.
So I'll give you the.
I think, I think either one of these candidates is a viable candidate, I don't have a problem with either one of them. I, I don't, I'm not a mind reader, and I don't know what you all know and what you've talked about, but I mean, not in this meeting, we did not talk about them, so. Does anybody interested in nominating either Brian Knapp or Bradley Tate Green for the commission?
I'll give it a shot. I, or nominate Bradley Tate Green for our next commissioner for the open seat.
Do we have a second? Colton, are you there?
I'm here.
What do you think?
There's a open nominee, there's an open nomination right now, right, waiting on a second.
And two other people that applied when you had applied, and, you know, we had a pretty good group, so we picked you, but it doesn't mean that one of the other candidates is not a good viable candidate, we just, we picked you for whatever reason, we don't have to get into.
And now you get the hot seat. What do you think about this?
I want to be fair to the other candidates, we didn't reject them, we just voted for Colton, so I was one of these other candidates viable, and so Robert has nominated Bradley Tate Green, who has been on the commission before, we all know him, right? Everybody knowing him? So do we have a second? Anybody want a second, Bradley Tate Green? Okay, I guess we're done. So we'll leave it open for any more applications and see what happens in the future. Hopefully, everybody else stays, but can't leave until we get to new people, so. All right, old business is done, new business, funding requests?
No, we updated. My, on the new business, the coordination of events.
Oh, it's, that's, that's number C.
Oh, wait, sorry. All that's.
Yes. You're jumping on here.
Yeah, yeah.
Funding requests?
None.
Oh, none, okay. I thought, I hadn't seen any.
You're welcome. I wanted to just see your faces.
Just make one up.
Is this a Halloween trick?
It's incredibly gratifying.
I was at a meeting, though, and someone brought up an interesting question, can they come and do funding requests now for next year? I mean, the budget's not set, you know, is there a rule against that? I'm just kind of like, I don't.
No.
No, there's not a rule.
Yeah, so they can apply right now for next year?
Because it's this year's money. It's this year's money, so.
It'd be this year's money, even though the event would happen next year? Do we have, how much money we have left?
It's on that, I think it's $11,000. Yeah, $11,000. $11,000's left this year.
Okay.
There's an update in your folders and your folders, I put an update in there.
So there's $11,000 left in our budget for funding requests, any organizations who want to apply for even event that's set, set for next year, they can apply for it, they can get the money. Robert?
Just a general question, would it make, would it make not more sense to have those funding requests or the money allocated to those events in the budget of the year when it happens? I mean, that.
I think that's up to our finance director. Is there a problem with that, or is there a need to keep it in the same year, or?
It's just, when it's approved, we recognize the liability, and it goes against the expense at that point. It becomes an expense and a liability when it's approved.
That's why you want to have it in, in the current year?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay. Is that it? Next, B, city auditorium contract. Mike and I talked about this, I know y'all discussed it in the workshop a little bit, about having a, a workshop about the contract. Mike has tracked down some of the past paperwork, and I think, I'm going to propose that Mike and I and the city manager, the city financial director, I'll meet and have a meeting first to see what's actually going on, and then I'll bring it back to y'all about having a joint workshop if I, and present what we find out. So I think this, we need.
There actually is, there actually is an agreement, but it's, I've not actually seen the agreement as it was amended, I think, in 2021, and Michael Akins has got a copy of it, and, you know, really need to review that and see what had happened during that transition. When the CAPC moved from the quarter shops up on Van Buren to here, there was things that happened. So we, we really need to look at that, but I think the best opportunity really is just to go ahead and hone out, you know, where things are. You know, for instance, we have passed off the elevator over to the city, thank goodness, and that's a work in progress as well, but we still have got quite a bit of work to do.
So that agreement would be a signed agreement from like, what did you say, 2021? Or is it just like, I thought we, we were talking about that, that it was only like a proposed agreement, but it was never signed?
No, there's a real agreement.
There is a real, okay.
Yeah, I was, in our files here, physically in our corridors, I've never seen it, but it does exist, and Michael with the city has got that copy, and it was.
Could we get a copy of that agreement?
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, well, let us meet and figure out where we're at.
Yeah.
And then we'll go from there, if that's okay for everybody. Coordination of events, Robert, this is yours.
Yep. Okay, so I'm prepared, a little bit. I, I've noticed that new events, you know, take over old spots in our calendar, and all the events are forced to move their events to new dates. Currently, we had the change with the Corvette Weekend and with the Bike, Spooz and Barbecue, which I understand Bike, Spooz and Barbecue is an event which is out of our hand, out of our control, and we just have to fall in line, and, and I'm very glad to see that Corvette immediately reacted to the dates, to the, and adjusted their date to be in the same weekend like we had it this year, so, and last weekend of September, and then the first weekend of October is a given weekend for Bike, Spooz and Barbecue. What I've noticed, the other thing is Jeep Jam announced their event for 2026 on the weekend, which is traditionally for the Anti-Car Show, it's the weekend after Labor Day, and I was just a little bit appalled about seeing that, that there was no coordination, or I don't know how that happened, it was just announced, this is our date period, everybody else has to fall in line. And, and I'm just questioning, is there a way, an organization, either way, it's us, or it's the Chamber, or it's the city, who kind of has a finger on, no, you can't have that date, because it's, it's a tradition, and I mean, this is a local event, the Jeep Jam is a local event, Anti-Car Show is a local event, and now we're pushing, or we're having our Folk Festival in the same with the Anti-Car Show. I mean, we're now forced, I, I talked to the Chamber a little bit, and, and to Damon and Devin, and it's like, the question is now like, are we going to have those events at Labor Day weekend? I don't know if that's a good weekend to take a federal holiday to have our events on the same weekend. I mean, Hillberry is set, and, and, you know, we have those three weekends, three weekends now wonderfully planned, but the weekend before, the, the one in the middle of September, which, let's say, traditionally would be the Jeep Jam, all of a sudden is an empty weekend. And I don't know who has the power or can talk to the event organizers from Jeep Jam and tell them like, could you not move your event to that empty weekend, and traditionally, Anti-Car Show has the weekend after Labor Day together with Folk Festival.
Maybe letting Mike and Danielle tell us how this process goes about. How, how does the calendar set up?
I mean, I, I will add to that, you know, the, like, the Jeep Jam, they go to the city, and I'm sure they have to apply for a parade, a parade permit, so that, that is, that would be the tool from the city to say, no, you know, we, we have to coordinate, and you can't have that, if you want to have a parade on that weekend, we won't permit it, because that is the, you need to find the right date. I don't know, that's just an idea, or.
Can you tell us how this happens? I mean, how does it coordinate?
You have a pretty good understanding, because it's, we are at the mercy of the permits that are issued, and it is a first-come, first-served basis. So we're at the mercy of those organizers, when they, what they have communicated, and many a time, we don't find out until the permit master list is sent to us by the city, or if we're putting together a calendar and we are seeking information, we find out like everybody else.
But, you know, isn't it kind of funny, I mean, we're a small town, we, we have technically three organizations, so CAPC, the Chamber, and the city, and we don't talk about that? I mean, it, this, something, you know, organizing events for, for our town is crucial, that it is well set, so it will, it will fall in line with all the businesses, and everybody's kind of happy, I mean, like, especially if it's an event which is not set on a certain date. You know, I'm sure the Jeep Jam, it wouldn't matter if they have it a week later, because they're, they're well ahead in announcing the date, and, and it's a local event, it's a, it's not like Bike, Spooz and Barbecue, I understand, you know, they had, they had to look at the, at the Women Golf Tournament, and, and what Walmart is doing, and they have so many more factors they have to coordinate with, and, and that's why they picked that first weekend in October. But, but our local events, there must be a way that, that we can have a finger on it, or somebody has, has to have a finger on it before everything is granted. So if, if they would go to the city and ask for a parade permit, that the city would say, wait a minute, we have to talk to the Chamber and the CAPC first before we grant you, so that way we have a centralized event planning. There must be a way that we could organize that.
Well, I will say this, that the communication between CAPC and Chamber has incredibly improved, and Devin and Christine now are on, in that office, and we are communicating several times a week. And so we share information back and forth in, in an attempt to make sure that we are all informed. Some things just don't include us in the approval process. So, you know, when it comes to organization, there's a lot of great, well-meaning, take-charge, passionate people that are organizing events that are going forth, and they're positive, but they don't include checking with Chamber and CAPC as part of the steps in order to plan. I, it's not our place to say, I mean, we can bring up the point and, and request it, hey, could you check with us, because we've got a calendar, hey, could you check with Chamber, because they've got a calendar, before you issue permits? I mean, the request can be floated out there, but that's the best we can do at this point.
We're spending millions of, of dollars for advertising, and, and we're trying to kind of have a, you know, like, try to find, to make everybody busy, and, and I think that, I mean, we, I guess we have to find the way, then, who's approving the, the permit for a parade on the city side? Is that the city clerk? Or?
No, it's, it's the mayor's office.
It'll be the mayor's office. Once it's signed off by Public Works, EMS, and police and fire. All the departments sign off, and it, like Danielle said, it literally is a first-come, first-served thing, so there could be nine organizations on a, an event on one weekend, or a parade, and the first one that brings it in is supposed to get it, I don't know how it works over there, because I'm not in the office. But it really comes down to organizers of these events communicating with each other, and they already have a central hub, and that's sitting right here at the table.
But I mean, yeah, the, to me, it's like, before the city would grant, you know, I, I get that, okay, but sometimes you have to change procedures, because apparently they don't, they don't work. I mean, like, before somebody grants an approval, you can say, hey, you're the first on the list, yes, but, but before we approve your parade, we'll have to talk, coordinate with what's going on on that weekend, and then i-if everything falls in line, yes, you're the first one, you can have the parade. I mean, like, before just saying like, oh, it's first-come, first-served, you know, it's like, that, that's, sorry if I say it that way, that's a little bit too easy for me.
So actually, in, in hearing you say that again, I think it is a good idea, Steve, for us to bring it up to city council, just to add that line as a sign-off for CAPC, for the, for staff, with Public Works and with police, saying, okay, there are no other events with the parade this day, so it's okay with us.
Heather?
Yeah, I do want to say, Rob brings up a good point, if somebody's coming in to ask for funding, and then we grant them the funding, thinking, you know, it's going to take place on the date it historically took place, and it changes, and it competes with one of our events, we're essentially funding against our. and it competes with one of our events, we're essentially funding against ourselves. And so I do think it's a fair conversation to have so that we avoid doing that. I don't know if the ship has already sailed for Jeep Jam for 2026. There's a lot that goes into it. But from the perspective of when there, when any event organizer is coming in here to ask for funding, I don't know that it's our place to be super stringent about dates, but I do think it is our place to say, well, we are already funding something or we are holding something. And if we fund this, we're now competing against ourselves and that may not be the best business move.
Could it not be a conversation to have with the organizers of the events though to say, you know, you're leading Jeep Jam, perhaps we should sit down and discuss that there's an open weekend here as opposed to this one where you're going to be competing and you'll get more people in your shop sending your, you know, correlating businesses.
Mind people, I've been involved in a potential race that might happen here and the races are set up by circuits and there's an organization that people go from race to race to race. So you can't just say, well, let's just pick July 3rd. There's already a race somewhere else, July 3rd and the following weekend, the following weekend, there's only one weekend open. So there's, and the Jeep Jam's the same way, there's Jeep things that started happening everywhere. It's not like they can just pick another date because a lot of these people like to go to all the different ones. So, I mean, this is a humongous coordination issue and I don't know how to fix it. And you look at this year alone, Tour Homes canceled. Did they have that weekend booked already? So they had that weekend booked, other people could not book it and then they canceled. So, you know, who gets it next? Whoever just steps up and says, I want it, which I guess they did, so.
Now luckily, in place of that, there is an event that is going to be similar-
Right.
-so that that's not completely a wash.
Right.
So that's great.
But what I mean though is-
When they're coming back next year, the replacement is shifting to another weekend.
Yeah. But what I mean is if we start setting weekends-
Correct.
-because that's what they always do, then they cancel on us and then that weekend was left open for no reason, so.
And I only know that because there's been communication with those organizers. So it just, go ahead, Mike.
Part of the situation too is the availability of some of our larger lodging properties to be able to absorb an event. You know, and I had this conversation the other day with Randy at the end of the Ozarks, who was obviously very concerned about Corvettes and just things in general. And, you know, what happens, I think, probably is the really good events are well-established, they know how to play in the sandbox, if you will, to go through the procedures, but not all of those events are going to go into the city, for instance. Because if it's a doctor convention, there's going to be 50 or 60 doctors together and they're going to have a panel and whatnot, they may have absolutely no need for anything from the city at all. So that event can get locked into a particular lodging property and it can happen and, you know, we might not even know about it. So I think where we're at is really just trying to continually improve our lines of communication across all the playing fields, which is the Chamber, obviously, and the city, and then try to just make it kind of common knowledge and courtesy to be as proactive in terms of getting that information out as best you can. We started looking, you know, a couple of weeks ago at the schedule for the LPGA just to see when they were going to be playing anywhere close. Ironically, they're playing all over the world. They're not just playing in the United States. And they had not, they had not indicated their time to be playing in Rogers. So it was so interesting, what was, was it Monday that they announced BB and Q and it came right out and we were, wow, that's pretty quick. So they really wanted to nail it down. But what will happen? And this is the thing we cannot control. What happens if the LPGA wants to come back in and say, we want that date in Rogers? Well, Rogers has got to make up their mind, so it affects us too, you know, and that where we have no control.
For that event, I totally understand, you know, like, but for my understanding, the Jeep Jam is a local event. And I don't know if they have to coordinate with other events in their, in their world, you know, like, or if that ship, first of all, if that ship has sailed or not, if there's a chance that, that we can talk to, I guess it's Lacey Moffett who's organizing that, in that organization, if we can convince her and say, you know what, I mean, it's still 10, 11 months out before that event happens. I mean Corvette, they just changed it and Bike Spooz and Barbecue just changed it, kind of like, I mean, if you go ahead of the game, I understand you don't want to, before, you know, nothing has been printed yet. I mean, nothing has been probably really organized for that Jeep Jam 2026 specifically except just setting the date.
They set it and they were pubbing their next year's date at their event. So it was, it was a pretty quick turnaround. So I mean, the question can be floated. I can float it that direction and see, you know, I mean, all we can do is ask, see what the response is.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think-
And see if it's possible, but if it's not, you know, that's, that's why we were ready to come up with another plan.
Right. I mean, well, the other thing is, okay, are we swapping the weekend and are we going to have the Antique Car Show?
We would do it Labor Day weekend. I mean, well, I mean, we will do Folk Fest Labor Day weekend and it opens Sunday up for more live music and a great experience for our Labor Day visitors. Again, the trend for travel and tourism is people want an experience, they want events to attend wherever they're going to enhance their experience. And so we're going to be able to provide that for Labor Day. Now, if the Chamber has to decide whether or not they want to go ahead and put Antique Car for 2026 again with us, and that is up to them, we'll see.
I can see it, it might be a benefit, you know, you're, you know, more about the perfect date for a Folk Festival, you know, is it, is the Labor Day, could that be a good weekend? Yeah, maybe, that's, you have a point, you know, maybe we could have a Sunday event, which we don't have right now.
Correct.
Say we could use that day because some people don't work on Monday.
Correct.
True. And we contribute a little bit to that because when we look at our funding requests, we look at what weekend is this? Is there anything else going on? Should they move it somewhere else or there's something else not going on, some weekend is real quiet? So we help a little bit, kind of encourage that, so. But, you know, this is a huge issue. I don't, yeah, I think just trying to be open and communicating with the city and with the Chamber as much as we can.
It does not turn on a dime.
No.
But efforts are being made.
A lot of these big events, like the Governor's Conference and Tourism, they announce the last day of the conference, they announce when and where the next conference is going to be. They don't, it's not decided six months later, so.
Right.
By the way, that is Little Rock.
Oh, really?
This year, or in '26.
January or February, I think.
Be the end of February.
February.
Right.
All right. Anything else? That is the end of our agenda. Commissioner comments, Robert?
All right. Well, it's getting cold, huh? Like it's about time to stop. Season is coming to an end. I can, we can probably see that, you know, and there was a harsh change from two weeks ago from shorts and t-shirt to winter jacket. And it's not going to get any better temperature-wise, but, but I've looked up at the forecast and it looks like we're going to have probably another two weeks, really pretty weather. I mean, temperature will be on the cooler side, but rain should be done with the two days rain we had and this coming weekend, it looks really good and very interesting with the temperature and everything, what's going to happen. I was, I had the chance to go downtown real quick during the Zombie Parade when, before it actually started and, yeah, there was a lot of creepy people on the road, you know, like, but it was, it was another awesome event. Colton, you did a good job, you know, like, just keep going. And one thing I will say publicly, I, one of my guests left the booklet in the room, I guess it was the program for the whole Nightmare in the Ozark. And I looked through it and I was like, whoa, there should have been a whole lot more- Did we lose them? No, there should have been a whole lot more awareness about all the different films that were presented at here at the auditorium. I was like really blown away. I was like, this is really a great new event and we're looking forward to seeing that again next year. And also, of course, always, thank you very much for the CAPC team, work hard, good to see you on the road. Sometimes, you know, like we get hit almost. But it was a good weekend, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Shira?
Just thank you to everybody, CAPC staff, commissioners alike, our community. Things have gone really well. October has been super booming, happy tourist faces everywhere, people from all different places. I'm seeing it coming out of the woodworks, busy and I'm tired because this month is stomping me with good tourist activities. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Heather?
I love to see people busy. Thank you to the CAPC staff and I always get this wrong, it's the Times Echo, not the Echo Times, right? I saw the article. For those listening and for those who didn't see the article in the paper, it was so exciting to see the sheer amount of holiday-themed events going on.
Yes.
So thank you for all of that work because in the last few years, going from crickets to just something happening all season, I'm very excited and I think that business owners that I'm hearing from are really excited and grateful for the effort. So thank you all. Colton, a huge congratulations on another successful Zombie Crawl. I have been hearing about it from my students at the university and they loved it. They also said to say, they don't use Google, they use ChatGPT. And to let you all know that, because one of them listened to the meeting, a couple meetings ago, that Mike had said that and they were like, that's true. So I wanted to share that they are getting learnings from these meetings that they have watched of their own volition. Thank you all again and stay warm and safe out there.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what everybody said with Zombie Crawl and Colton and the staff and the staff of CAPC with, you know, the Film Fest and the Zombie Crawl and all the businesses that were involved. It was a lot of fun to see again, as usual. And if you haven't, I'm going to plug this shameless plug. If you haven't read Colton's book yet, it's really worth reading. It's really very good.
Oh, no, it's out of home. It's more than-
There you go.
Oh, then.
All right. Are you done?
Shira's singing.
That's for, that's for '24. We got, we got that in the spring, but thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike, you said you have one last thing and I forgot to go back to you.
This is what it is. Congratulations to the wonderful end keepers at that little place called Evening Jade and the award that they have accomplished to get. And it's just a testament to being good guys when people come up and share their hospitality and warmth.
We serve in love, you know, I mean, our whole goal is to treat people the way we want to be treated, so.
Congratulations.
Proud.
All right. November 12th again is our next workshop with a budget. Oh, I'm sorry. Colton, are you still there?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I almost missed you. You have any commissioner comments?
Just thank you to the CAPC staff who, particularly for the Film Festival and in particular Ty, who probably worked as much as I did at the Film Festival for just helping so much when they don't have to do that. So for those of you listening, the CAPC staff work a lot more than you think they do. And they help make sure that the events go smoothly. And thank you to Ron as well for working again, probably as much as I did those three or four days. It was very cool to see, I mean, the first night, there were a couple of hundred people in the audience and for many of them, I talked to a lot of them, it was their first time in Eureka Springs. All the filmmakers who came had never been here before and had nothing but great things to say. And these are people who are traveling to other parts of the country for the next several months and, you know, said that they would absolutely tell every, all the filmmakers they know that they need to come to Eureka Springs, come to the Nightmare in the Ozarks Film Festival. So I think we're reaching a new crowd of people that, that are not typically reached or haven't been reached through this event. And I was super glad that even with the rain, the Zombie Crawl seemed to be a huge success. Lots and lots of people showed up. It just took a lot of, a lot of me telling everyone every day that we weren't canceling for the rain. But people, I think, bought it and they showed up and it was, it was a blast. So thank you to the town. Oh, and thank you to the Eureka Springs Police Department for clearing off Spring Street. I don't know if they've ever done that before, but so with, by 3:00 PM, all the cars had to be moved between Main Street and Mountain Street. You know, if you're a little kid and you're trying to watch a parade and there's a car in the way, you're going to sneak out in front of the car to see what's going on and that can be really dangerous, especially for a very large parade. And I think it was a huge success having all of the cars off the street. I hope the other parade organizers will take note of that and I hope the police department takes note of that and city council that, I think that should be the default moving forward is that, especially on big parade days, no cars parked on Spring Street between Mountain and Main, after, you know, within two hours of the parade, essentially.
All right. Thank you, sir. Sorry, I almost missed you there. November 12th workshop budget, anything else anybody wants to talk about, send us your idea? All right, we moved our meeting to November 19th, a week earlier because of-
No, 20th.
The 20th?
20th. That's a Thursday.
The Thursday, the 20th, thank you.
Yes.
I have it wrong in my calendar. Thursday, the 20th, since next week's going to be Thanksgiving. So it's at 5:00 PM, our normal time, both workshop and the meeting. Thanks to all the CAPC staff, you always do a great job, we appreciate it and I'll take it, adjournment, motion to adjourn.
Second?
I didn't, I didn't make the motion.
I'll make, so I motion to adjourn.
I was asking for it, I wasn't doing it.
I love the crawl.